With revisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and exact extent, the agenda of this meeting, to the Asbury Park Press, and new poster on March 24th, 2022 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, billing board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on March 24th, 2022. Our mission statement: Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses skills and characters you see in a diverse, involving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Halls, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lotaraca, Mr. Remy, Ms. Ricks, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Cook.
Please rise for the facts. I'm sorry, if everyone can keep standing just a moment, just to give a moment of silence for everyone in Ukraine.
The superintendent's presentation for this portion of the meeting will be recognizing our staff members of the month. So with that being said, I would like to call up Ms. Theodore Jackson Byers for Bradley Elementary School.
So, our Bradley Elementary School staff member of the month, when I say she exemplifies student center, she is. For example, I asked her just to be here tonight because we had something student center, and she just came. And so I'd just like to say a special shout out and congratulations to Ms. Donna Ficara, our Bradley Elementary School staff member of the month. I had to surprise her. When I tell you she brings the sunshine when it rains, and she makes lemonade out of lemons. Thank you, Ms. Donna. We have, you have a certificate, Ms. Donna, in the school. I know, I just had to surprise you. I knew you were coming, no matter what.
Thank you, Ms. Donna.
Congratulations, congratulations. Turn around, turn around, turn around. You know, sometimes I have to kind of, you know, wrangle Ms. Jackson Byers in, because you know, she can go. She was my former vice principal, so I know. So, thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Jackson from Thurgood Marshall.
Good evening, everyone, again. Our staff member of the month for Thurgood Marshall Elementary School is none other than Ms. Regina Lynn Jagu. Ms. Jagu is one of the backbones of our school. Anything and everything that the student staff or myself needs at Thurgood, she is willing to do. She volunteers to do extra lunch duties for me daily. She brings things in for children without anyone even knowing, but I do. And she's always willing to just make our school the vibrant and wonderful place that it is. Without her, Thurgood Marshall would just not be the same. So, Ms. Jagu, on behalf of your TMES family, we adore you, we appreciate you. Congratulations and thank you so much.
Next up, Mr. Perry Medina from MLK Upper Elementary.
Good evening, once again. My name is Perry Medina, principal of Martin Luther King Upper Elementary. Unfortunately, Mr. Elliot Ramirez was unable to make it tonight, but I do want to say a few words about him. He is a dedicated staff member, and ironically, always present and always in attendance, but I'm sure he had some sort of emergency and you know why he wasn't here. He is a fourth grade ELA teacher. He is unafraid of trying different things, unafraid of receiving constructive criticism to refine his craft. He is truly an inspiration to our students and to myself. His work ethic is something to be proud of. So, on behalf of MLK, I'd like to congratulate him, and I will present him with his award and certificate tomorrow. Thank you.
Dr. Howard Morris for the Asbury Park High School.
Good evening. The Asbury Park High School has chosen Mr. Alexander Provenza as our staff member of Mr. Provenza is our math teacher at the Asbury Park Elementary School. Never complains. This year, we asked him to teach financial literacy for the seventh and eighth grade teachers, and he didn't complain. He currently works as the, one of the boys volleyball club coaches, and he was chosen as the Monmouth County Wrestling Coach of the Year this year, and we're very proud of that. He's been working with our wrestling program in the middle school prior to coming to the high school. And lastly, he currently asked if he can volunteer to start a chess club for the seventh and eighth grade team twice a week, and we're going to be happy for that. So again, we're happy to have Mr. Provenza at our high school.
Congratulations, congratulations to all of our teachers of the month. Madam President, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Before we open public comment, we're going to have a comment from, our lawyer, Adam.
In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President or the Presiding Officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the Presiding Officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the Presiding Officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the Board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you, Adams. At this time, we'll open up public comment. I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session, whereas the public, I'm sorry, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows exclusion from discussion at the public participation of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been made, now therefore been resolved that on, that March 24th, 2022, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose of outline and described below, upon return, actions may be taken. Confidential matters pursuant on court orders, impact rights to receive federal funds, unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, collective bargaining, acquisition of real property or investment of funds, public safety procedures, litigation or contact matters, alternate contact privileges, personnel matters, imposing of penalties upon an individual. Motion, please.
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And for the members of the public who are present and may be watching elsewhere, the Board is about to retire to executive session for approximately 15 minutes. The Board will not be taking any action in executive session. The reason for the executive session is to discuss personnel matters, matters related to collective bargaining, labor issues, and personal matters and student matters. Again, we'll be returning in about 15 minutes. Thank you.
Motion to move back into public session? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Halls, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lotaraca, Mr. Remy, Ms. Ricks, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Cook.
Dr. Howard.
The HIV report is listed in agenda, three items, so I page six, A6. So there were three, three reported HIV complaints. There were, sorry, there were three separate incidents. And in the first incident, there were three allegations. One was founded, and the second incident, there were two allegations, and they were both founded. And in the third incident, there was one allegation which was founded. They both resulted in parent conferences for all three of the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. State matters report?
I'm going to reserve my time for later in the meeting, possibly.
All right, just a minute.
Could I have a motion for nine A and B and number 10 in the calendar?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
The superintendent's agenda, please.
Madam President, I'd ask for a consent agenda for all items on B1 through B5, excuse me, B6.
Move it.
Second.
May I, just on the policies, some of the approved dates have to be changed. It says March 17th, which was the original date of our meeting this month, so just wanted to make a note of that. And there were some changes with the dates with the curriculum agenda. I just wanted to make sure that was included.
Okay, we'll make the adjustments as noted. Any questions or comments on B section?
I have one quick comment. B2, their retirements. I think that's pretty phenomenal that we have, we have four longstanding employees of the district that put in well over 20 years, each one of them. And I just think that's maybe a knowledge of just publicly or something, but I think that's phenomenal, that they stayed, and best wishes on their retirements.
So we'll be doing a recognition of those staff at the June meeting?
This is for all items B1 through B6. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, but I'll need to abstain from any items related to APPA.
Thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for all items C1, number one to C3, number nine.
That doesn't, that's separating the budget. I just don't have that page over.
Yes, that separates the budget as a separate vote.
I'll move it.
Move by Ms. Lozinski, second, by Ms. Ricks. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is for all items C1, number one to C3, number nine. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
And Ms. Cook?
Yes.
All items carry.
Can I just, for one minute, just want to bring something up, if I may, Madam President. The railroad crossing at six, we discussed it briefly with the superintendent about New Jersey Transit wanted to close the street there, but I think the suggestion was to keep a pedestrian truss for the students that go back and forth, and the people that utilize our fields and things. So I just wanted to memorialize it as a vote, so the Board supports that, letter in opposition to the closure, because I know we discussed it, and I think the Board needs to vote on that.
So, what we, just for clarification, we're waiting to get communication from the municipality utilizing their language in their letter to the New Jersey Department of Transportation about the Sixth Street Crossing. It was discussed that we would like to send a joint from the school district, including the Board, but once we get that, then we will move to provide a letter of support for, in support of the municipality about the Sixth Street closing.
So I'd like to make a motion about issuing that letter in support of that closing for the city.
Does that have anything to do with the safe routes to schools?
No.
Okay. That's, that's New Jersey Transit. It's just, yeah.
Do you want to do a big December file out and close off that Sixth Street?
I'll second it.
This is a motion to write a letter in support of the city on their Sixth Avenue crossing position. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the adoption of our tentative budget on page C5, number one?
I'll move it.
Yeah, I'll speak to it because I'm kind of on the record here as not supporting the budget in its current form. I think, I'll first talk about what I see as our failures. We failed to define the issue. We failed to explain school funding. We haven't disseminated the accomplishments that we've had as a district, and we haven't discussed the cuts we've made and why. We are not at the point where upon this budget passing, which will, just by human nature, bring about a ton of negativity toward the district, to be able to explain yet why we should be at a higher per pupil, cost per pupil. I can think of some reasons, but we haven't done that analysis, we haven't presented that. We don't have a plan. We're not exactly sure why it was 8.4 this year, and what will it be next year and the year after. We have to develop a plan. We have not decided about facilities in this district. We have not shown that our, our footprint has shrunk as the district has shrunk. We haven't answered the myriad of questions that we're going to be hit with yet, which is why I think we all agree, or at least I agree, where we need to go. We're going to need to go with large, local increases in local support. We have to go there. What I'm disagreeing with is how we go there. We're going to come out with a budget now, which is going to shock people because we have not done those things. And I guess to say, well, it's up to the city to do that, it's a little naive to think the city's not going to turn and say, well, it's those knuckleheads on the school board. There's a little, there's a little bit of, it's everybody else's job, and I think our job for our kids is going to be more effective if we can move forward with information and a plan that is persuasive to some. We will still get a ton of negativity, but I believe if we do it right, we can, we can persuade those that agree with the concept that if Asbury Park wants to be a great city, it needs a thriving school district. If Asbury Park wants to be a great city, it needs to support its children's education, and we do that as a group, from the community, from nonprofits, from the city, helping out. And we have specific asks and specific ideas that we can then present to the city, having said, this is what we've already done, and we just have to make quick decisions on certain things that we've dithered about here for about two years at least. I don't know. I would argue, if you do it right, and if you get community support, and if you get more people together, you are doing your job. It's going to be better for the kids in the long run. If you say, this is what we do, and oh, hey, here's a $6 million increase out of the blue, where people still don't even understand funding, they've been griping about the tax increases, thinking because we're spending too much money, rather than understanding the local share concept. We have not presented that. I think it's our job to do that because it's going to make us better. And so with that, I would say, we have to buy one more year. And how do we do it? We have to give something up, and I would move that we take 2.5 million more of the ESER funds and repurpose it to reduce the tax increase from 6 million to 3.5, if I did my subtraction correct in my head. So that, I don't disagree with where we've got to get. I disagree with some of the statements about what I, what I view my job to be here, and therefore, that's how I would solve this year's problem. It makes it a bigger problem for next year, but again, I believe we can bring some people, not everybody, but some people along, who will understand what we're doing, what we've accomplished so far, what we plan on accomplishing in the future, why we feel more confident with this administration that we're going to accomplish it, and the more people within the city who believe in the schools, the better it's going to be for our kids. Thanks.
I just have a smaller comment because I feel like Dominic stole my speech. But my biggest concern in terms of this is firmly rooted in the kids of Asbury Park, the children of Asbury Park, simply because we're a town of, let's say, 72% renters at this point, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. And I feel like, I feel like the, it's a false argument to say it's taxpayers versus the kids, right? I always thought that that was a false argument because we're so intersecting in this, in this municipality, in this, in this city, where, yeah, the property owners and homeowners, some of whom have kids in the school district, not all, but some, are going to think about moving, selling their house and moving away from the district, which caused disruption in terms of enrollment that already we're having issues with, and also the fact that those that rent, they're going to see their rent go up, which also will potentially displace families and children from the district. So I wanted to just add that on to Dominic's comment because a lot of times, the kind of perception is that it's this segregation of homeowners and property, and property owners and taxpayers here, and the kids and the families that send their kids to Asbury Park Schools over here. So that's, that's all I wanted to add to that, is that this is, it's all, it all intersects. So, that's all.
The only thing I'd like to say to the Board is that this is a tentative budget. It has to go to the county and sent back to the district. And in between now and our next meeting in, in March, we can make changes. We can work with the administration and see if we can do some other creative financing, as Dominic has said, and then come to an agreement. I own a final budget in March, and, I mean, April, and then we could also have until second, I think, second week in May to really have a final final. So what I would encourage tonight, so we can move the process forward to adopt a tentative, and then see when we go from there.
Would that include, so if we, if we adopt a tentative budget, what, what does, what does that look like from when the actual budget takes place? What are the negotiations or the meetings or, you know, is there a set, kind of set of actions that, that takes place?
I would encourage the Finance Committee to take that helm and, you know, move forward and have meetings with the administration to see what other things can be done to change it until it becomes final. That's, that's what I would do. It's entirely up to the Board.
Well, I think the administration's going to put it, I mean, we're pretty late to make cuts, which is why I think the only issue on the table is we can, if we can repurpose ESER funds. So I, well, to Joe's point, though, I mean, I can, I could get to yes if it's a lot more formal about that issue, but I've got, if, if that's not a possibility to get more formal to have that, then, then I remain a no.
So what is it you're asking to? So what is it you're asking to have this tentative budget approved tonight? What would be your addendum to the resolution?
Well, the addendum I want would be to change the budget to 2.5 million more. What I could probably live with is if the administration is open to a good faith analysis to rework ESER funding, or if they feel this has to be the budget for the policy reasons they see that are critical to where the ESER money is currently going.
So would you, if the motion was to accept the tentative budget with revisiting of the ESER funds to try to reduce the tax increase for the year, is that what you want?
Can I, just, the tentative budget needs to be submitted by Monday to the county superintendent. The tentative budget will then be reviewed by the county superintendent, county business administrator. They will look at it, make sure it's correct, give me corrections or comments that I will then incorporate, and then they'll say, yes, that budget is approvable from their standpoint. In end of April, beginning of May, the board would then be asked to adopt the final budget. And state monitor or superintendent can correct me, but at that point, we then either submit the budget as it was approved during this particular session, or we adopt the budget and we notify the county of the changes that were made by the board. So that's sort of where we are right now. Now, between tonight and what happens a month from now is really up to the board and the committees and superintendent and myself and the other folks involved with this process to address. And I don't think we can submit a resolution to submit to the county with stipulations.
I think we have an understanding of that, you know. The hope is there would be a change between now and then.
Well, can, can... I don't know all this stuff. I just turned to Dr. Adams and Ms. Morrison and said, you know, I presented my position. I don't know if anybody's with me or not, but is this, are we going to be negotiating on ESER funds or you're not going to? And that'll pretty much solve it.
Well, I would also say that if that's the case, can't we do a separate, can we do a separate resolution calling for, you know, a certain amount of finance committee meetings, like, once a week for the next month, to check in to see where we're at with it?
I would not suggest that you do that. However, you certainly amongst yourselves as board members can commit to sitting down as often and as frequent as necessary. You want to be able to submit a clean resolution, if you will, to the county. But again, you can, whichever way you vote, to the extent that tonight amongst yourselves, you can come to some sort of understanding that you're going to be reviewing, revisiting, looking at the potential use of ESER funds and other sources, you certainly can commit to each other to engage in that type of a process. There's nothing wrong with that. And that would not have to be memorialized in any way in a resolution or anything like that. It's just something that we're saying out loud essentially tonight to each other, committing to each other, that that's, you know, what's going to happen. That's the plan, if you will. But I would certainly not want you to mess with or otherwise fool with your approval because the tight timeframe. And again, as Dr. Adams said earlier, this is not any one person's fault. This is the way that the process happens and the timeline happened from the governor to the Department of Education down to us. So unfortunately, we are kind of behind in April, or for those, given the St. Peter's Peacock shot clock, we do have a shot clock that we're looking at, which is Monday. So we are kind of, the time is now, if you will.
Right.
If I may, I think everyone made very good points here. I would have to agree with them. We can, this is tentative budget. It's not finalized. We can always go back and visit. We can definitely do a caveat where we do sit down, have our meetings, see what else we can do to bring funding in. I personally am supportive of the budget. Roque, Mr. Hastings?
This is for the adoption of the tentative budget. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
No.
Mr. Lataroca?
No.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I make a motion to close the meeting? No? Oh, state monitor?
That's all right, if you want to. I would just like to, first of all, thank the board, obviously, for the vote, but also add that I respectfully listen, Dominic, to everything that you're saying. I do have to, as in public, as the state monitor, remind the board that the number one obligation here, first and foremost, is to provide a budget that will address the needs of T and E, their inefficient education for the students in the Asbury Park school system. To those that are listening, I would simply comment as a monitor that all over the state, it's been evidenced that as a district becomes smaller and smaller, its costs unfortunately go higher. And a lot of people do not understand why. And it's, I like to use a very simple example, and I don't mean to demean the process or the example at all, but to say that if you are operating, for instance, a classroom, and you are paying for the heating in that classroom and the electricity in that classroom, it doesn't matter whether there are five students or 25. The bill to heat and provide electricity is the same. So obviously, if you have 25 students and a larger population, it spreads out more and it directly, directly then affects the per pupil cost in the end result. Thorough and efficient has been tested, as you know, it's been tested in the courts. It's addressed every year at budget time. But I would like to go back and address it for a moment in a different context. In the first meeting that we had, Dr. Adams listed all of the different areas that had been consulted and had the opportunity to share with him their suggestions on this budget. It was thorough. It's a long list. I don't think it could include anybody else. Everybody had an opportunity to look at it and make suggestions. I thought that it was very thorough. If I had not thought that, I would have told them somewhere along the line and suggested or directed, which I have by law the ability to do, that they bring in all of those stakeholders. Now we are at the point, and I know that people, Dominic was right, people do not understand public school budgets. They are difficult to understand. I'm not in any way demeaning anyone that doesn't understand it. The issue is, at this point in time, the administration has said tonight to the board, this is what we're asking for because in consultation with all of those groups and a review over and over and over again by Mr. Hastings and Dr. Adams, this is the budget we have come up with, and we are at a loss to present to you something that would reduce this. So now, tonight, it comes back to the board. And in your process from this point until you adopt the final budget, let me say, it's up to the board. If you have suggestions to the administration to reduce this $6 million, as Dominic has done by referring to the ESER funds, I interpret that to be your suggestion, then the rest of the board has the responsibility not to sit and say, I don't like that budget, I'm not going to support it. Well, then, give us one that will. You will support, you can support. Because voting no simply says, I don't like this budget, but I'm going to sit back and you can bring two or three more if you come up with them, and I'll consider those. That's not the role of the board. The role of the board right now is to provide a budget that addresses the needs of the students of this district. The needs are greater with COVID as we know. We have all kinds of additional issues with children that teachers are dealing with every day in their classrooms, just as parents are at home. But the bottom line here is that there has to be a budget, just as a guideline for the future, in April. There has to be a budget. The administration have counseled with them. They are willing to consider anything that you, as an individual board member, would like to see considered as a reduction in the budget itself. Dr. Adams indicated it was not going to be on the backs of teachers. If that's something you're not in agreement with and you think there should be 20 more school district teachers to reduce the budget, share that with him. I'm sure he'll consider it. He may, he's not going to sit here and agree to it, that he will do it, but we can't have it, obviously, both ways. And as I said, this is a budget that has to be resolved now. And going to, whether it's council or any other place, and talking to them about plans for the future, or next year, or five years from now, is a great idea, but it's not going to address this particular budget, which much, much must, excuse me, be addressed and certified for this coming school year. So I, again, thank, obviously, this is not something that the state does not want in any stretch of the imagination to rule or run your school district. We have, as you can tell from my, I guess you could say, omitting many reports to the board verbally, and sharing with people, as I have felt the need over this time that I've been here, to talk to them personally, if I saw something that I thought was not appropriate or should be addressed in the district. I am a low-key monitor. I am not going to be out here flashing and letting people think that I'm running the school district. That's not my style. It's not my working mode. But I will be here to help you any way that I can. Mr. Hastings knows, Dr. Adams knows, I have contacted everybody that I can think of, even those that are stopped taking my calls and threaten, that I'm sure they're saying that woman's on the phone again. This is unfortunately for us where we are as a district. And the thing that, with the property values going up, with the enrollment coming down, the fair share of the school district, which is the amount of money the taxpayers pay, chip in to run it, has gotten way out of line. And that's what we're addressing. And I don't see any way out of that because, you know, you have to sit down and, I always say, count the number, count your votes, or count the heads, whatever expression you use. And when you look at the state, you know, there's, I don't think there could be anybody in Warren County that would have one bit of sympathy or interest in the state that we're in. And unfortunately, there are a lot of those people in the state. So when you talk to one possible person, you know, you don't get a real true indication of will the state change its formula, or where are they going with it, or is there going to be any relief? Even if you talk to that person, say, oh, yeah, I'll look into it, I'll try to go out there and fight for you, there are a lot of people out there that are not going to be sympathetic to it because they come from a different set of circumstances. So I thank you for your vote, and I welcome the opportunity. I'm here, call me. Get my cellphone from Dr. Adams. If you don't want to share with everybody your suggestion for what be cut or where we go with this, please call me. I'll be very willing to work with you and do what I can to help support you, to provide that thorough and efficient education. And I thank you for your patience.
Motion to close?
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.